So when you come on to the page, um, this is going to be the default map. This is the combined uh suitability model for where these different factors are um and uh and um. So it is where the pro-development factors are and then um subtracting the environmental um factors, but really the map itself is two sub-modes. So let me start with the two sub-modes because the final map is in some ways um the, you know, the the conclusion, but it's not the best way to be thinking about this. Um smart growth is building in the right place for the infrastructure and for the geography of our landscapes. So there's the development model or sub-model, development redevelopment model. That's what this looks like with the different factors that we have, where the darker the um um blue colors are, would be the highest cumulative factors that suggest that that's the smartest places to grow and to redevelop. Um whereas the yellows would be the the lowest number of factors for pro-development or pro-redevelopment. Uh and so that's, that's what that looks like. And of course, it's made up of of the component layers. Uh so let's take a quick look at that. We start with the state plan itself. So the state plan has um five planning regions uh and um the number of points that we have um assigned to the different planning regions, you can see in the legend here. So planning areas one have ten points, planning areas two, five points, three, four points, and then rural three, rural environment sensitive one, environment sensitive one. Okay, so um uh everyone on this call, of course, is intimately familiar with that. That's the point system. That's the first set of points, um possible maximum of ten points for your planning area. And then we look at the state plan centers uh and the cores and nodes. Uh and those are additional twenty-five points because we really want to encourage development to happen in centers and we want to encourage towns to think about creating new centers in the future. So yeah, that's a good number of points that are assigned to center. Centered space development is kind of the smart growth uh idea as a generic term. Um so we have historic preservation gets a point for that. We want to be thinking about historic preservation in conjunction with how we're growing. Uh want to be near recreational lands, so we have uh five points for being near uh a recreational land use from the DEP land use data. Proximity to public facilities. This is an interesting one that has evolved, I think, since the last time that we demoed it. This is having a number of uh of centers um that are um that are things that are are mappable, like municipal buildings and hospitals and schools. And if you are within a quarter mile of those things, you get one point. So if you're a quarter mile of multiple things, like, for example, if we uh are are looking um up at Trenton here, um you get a point for each one of those things that you're within uh a quarter mile. So you could have a possibility of having twenty-five maximum points for the whole dataset. If you have places reach twenty-five points, the idea being that if you are in an area where you have really walkable access to what we're calling public facilities, um uh you are getting more points for for that. Um and those set of public facilities um are in the metadata. We'll have that here in the legend. And this can, this can change and and we could have, you know, more um what we're calling public facilities is really driven by the data that was available as we were doing this. Okay, so that's public facilities. We have um points for proximity to public transportation. And so before this was just transit villages, but we expanded it to be all rail and bus stops to get some kind of points, whereas the transit villages do get um the most points. And so you can see that they're cumulative in a way. So if you're in an area, that's where transit villages and you're also near a bus stop, you get the extra point for the bus stop uh or a rail stop. In this case, it's the uh the river line. So this is a, I I think, a more um holistic um transportation um metric. Uh and you can get um up to possible uh thirteen points in some areas where you have multiple um uh transit um nodes uh within the distances that we are, that that are part of this model. Okay, um we have the walkability score. This is from DCA. Uh and um that's an interesting way of looking at the, at the geography of of municipalities and and census tracts to uh to show where you have the potential for a walkable urban infrastructure or suburban infrastructure. Um that gets um up to ten points for the highest. We have uh municipal density. This was an attempt to try to balance out within any county. The municipalities that are denser than the county average, um not a whole lot of points, five points for that, but an idea of trying to make sure that rural counties have uh the more dense municipalities in the rural counties uh that are acknowledged. Sewer service area, very important infrastructure. That's twenty-five points, as is the drinking water purveyors. Uh that's uh ten points. Areas in need of redevelopment, that gets um uh three points. Um and um we clip out there some land uses that are going to be compensated now in in the rules, but we we clip out farmland. Um so it's uh areas of redevelopment minus some of the the farmland areas. Areas are just adjacent to um existing development. This is urban land use from a land use sand cover plus fifty feet. Now, the idea there is to try to compensate for the um for for infill, for for encouraging lots to be built next to other lots, uh rather than leapfrogging out into the into the countryside and then impervious surface. Uh a little bit hard to see unless we zoom in here, but in impervious surface, uh you get five points for that. And this um kind of shows the impervious surface uh dataset um that you, that is used for that. So um that's the, that's the, the um are the uh development redevelopment suitability model. You add them all up. Again, I'll show that through the cumulative model. It's at the top of the stack here. The the redevelopment um suitability model, we can again zoom in in any area. Now that I've gone through it, if, and of course, I'm always South Jersey centric, so you're just gonna have to get me to go to other places, but let's zoom in to uh say New Brunswick. And if you look, you can see within the colors of the map, especially if I make the transparency full, you can see the 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 um the vestiges of all the different points adding up. You can see the circles for the, for the bus stops. You can see the impervious surface. You can see uh the different um uh areas for walkability, all combined into a total number of points. Now, what this doesn't really show well is the fact that there's some places here that you you can't build. You can't build on water. You can't build in the middle of the highway. Uh you can't build where there's already open space. So um when we get to the final map, I'm going to show how we've actually added in the masks for water bodies for open space and I don't have it here, but also roads and road right of ways. So what that does is it actually helps you to focus on what actually is possibly redeveloped or developable, not be confused by areas that are already preserved, open space and so forth. The final model, the combined model has this, just from the beginning, these um donut holes punched out so that there's no question that a model is saying build in the middle of the Raritan River because you can't. Uh so anyway, just want to kind of bring that to your attention. So that's, that's the urban development and redevelopment model. It doesn't tell you whether it's open land or or already developed. Um we do have the overlay of the urban lands. So you can see, just when I turn that on, the little blotches that are in the halls are areas that are not developed, but they come out as higher um in the values. So that would be your undeveloped green fields that are in the areas that have pro um development redevelopment values. Um and anything that's pink where it's already urban, that's where redevelopment can happen. And that's what we want to also um be bringing that to the, to the forefront. So you could have high values in this model um and be already developed land, and it may be just really a good place for thinking about redevelopment if the economics are are there for it. And again, open space, we mask out the open spaces because that's not, that's not available. All right, so not to make it any less, um but the environmental model comes next. Um and so uh the environmental model, and and one of the things we can, you can help us decide here. I just went through the the urban development and redevelopment um model. And in the legend, we have the number of points. But we're trying to keep the data so that we're communicating in a way, in a way that's, that's logical. And so in this one, we have put in our little code. So development, and this is the second layer, so it's DO2. Somewhere we need to have a code system that you can quickly look at the 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 tables and and anything written about it and know what layer we're talking about. Right? So uh you know, I'll open it up to when I'm done here, to what you think works better. We have the issue of how big it is in the legend title. Right? And putting that code in the title makes it bigger, as we're going to see. We did that as an example for the environment. Here we are, but I'm gonna turn off the the um the 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 um environmental, I mean, the development, and I'm going to turn on the environmental maps. I'm gonna, the the total combined environmental suitability map looks like this. I'm I'm going to turn off the um labeled roads for now so that it's less noise. Now, what is this? This is a similar idea as the, as the pro-development redevelopment model. Only this is showing where are the most sensitive uh environmental uh geographies throughout the state, using a lot of data that our state is blessed to have because we have a lot of um a lot of environmental stresses and we have a small geography and lots of people. So we've spent a lot of money in the last uh three decades developing the best GIS mapping, I think, in the country. I'm thinking it's fair to say that. And so we've taken some of the most important data layers that show environmental sensitivity and put that into the model, which looks like this. Uh the darker the blue, if I open up the legend here, um the more cumulative points there are um in the point system here. So let's take a look at what makes the environmental model. We're going to start with the first four of them have to do with flooding. Right? So the first one is are your typical FEMA uh firm hundred-year um flood maps. Um this is the one that's modified by Rutgers to uh include um uh the pending um a flood area. So it's a little bit um there's not a whole lot of differences, but there are some little bits and pieces there. But this is what, this is the FEMA flood mapping. This is the firm uh uh one hundred-year flood mapping. Now, Rutgers created the dataset that took this layer and then estimated using some pretty sophisticated um elevation modeling. Where would the flooding be if you had three feet above the the FEMA firm maps? And that's the FEMA plus three, um and that's what this data looks like here. I'm going to double click on the FEMA firm map because the last layer you check on in NJ map is the hi, the one that is drawn on top of everything else. So by doing that, now we can see the FEMA firm and then we can see the added footprint of the FEMA plus three. It adds a substantial number of acreage to this um flooding uh concern area. Uh and so that, we can see here, the FEMA gets twenty-five points, the FEMA plus three gets an additional ten points. Um and so we're starting to build our our environmental model there. The other two um uh flood maps are more coastal, so let me zoom over here to uh to um uh Monmouth and Ocean Counties. And let's look at um number three. This is the FEMA Storm Surge Cathay plus five. And then we have um the Rutgers five-foot uh sea level rise. Not exactly the same geographies, but no surprise, they are uh they rhyme, they're similar. They have their uh, you know, areas that are, that are showing that. So we get um ten points for um the FEMA coastal and we get and twenty points for five-foot sea level rise. Um and so you can see that the, that we are building up that there's flood, flooding is a very important part of this environmental um window into into this because flooding is going to be where climate change is probably most impacting uh the future of New Jersey. So we need to be mapping this stuff. We need to show it's there so we have information about how to think about the places that are have the potential for flooding. Now, again, I can put them all on and change the transparencies. You could see them all added up. But in the end, that's what the the final map is. Let's continue going through the environmental here. Uh wetlands, very important uh resource for New Jersey. We have over a million acres of wetlands and we have some pretty um um s- strong wetlands um regulations in New Jersey. Uh we have all the wetlands mapped with the appropriate or estimated um buffer. So in the pines, for example, you can see the yellow indicates a three-hundred-foot buffer and the blue indicates a fifty-foot buffer. So those are kind of the 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 bookends. Most wetlands will come in at, well, I'm not gonna say most, but ordinary wetlands would be coming in at fifty foot. That's the blue buffer. And then when you have endangered species, or if you're in the pines or highlands, it's three-hundred-foot. So these are showing, we we don't know any particular wetlands, if there's endangered species or what the buffer is going to be. So this is estimating or showing the minimum. And then in the case where we know that there's three-hundred-foot, like the pines and the highlands, um it's showing it there. So if I zoom into uh again, I'm South Jersey centric, sorry about that. We zoom into outside the pines, we see there's just a fifty-foot buffer on the wetlands. Now, these are aerial interpreted. They are not on-the-ground wetlands data. We know this as users of this data, but we need to make sure that it's clear that these are very good maps, but they're not the truth. You have to go and do a ground survey for knowing where the wetland delineation is and letter of interpretation and and all that. But saying that, these are very good indicators of the likelihood of wetlands. Wetlands fifteen points. Um we have water bodies, same thing. Um water bodies are typically have the the fifty-foot uh buffer, um except for the highlands where the three-hundred-foot buffer on everything. So so they are, they are yellow uh there with the three-hundred-foot buffer. We have streams. The streams layer shows again the fifty-foot buffer um from um and then from from Hazard Control Act, and then where the C1 streams, they are the three-hundred-foot yellow buffers. So we have them all packaged in each layer, so you can see where those uh streams and wetlands and water bodies and 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 um uh those hydrologic features. Uh and and again, they are added up. You can see the points here, fifteen, ten, ten. Uh and um cum- cumulatively, they're adding to the model. Um uh layer number eight, environmental eight, E O eight, that is threatened and endangered species. This is the um the um landscape projects, three, four and five. Um we can see the geography of that. Um we have the natural heritage priority sites, another fifteen points. Uh these are places that are, have documented um um resources that uh need to be um planned around and 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 protected. So they're there. They get a fifteen points. Vernal pools, uh we have vernal pools with varying buffers depending on where you are. Uh actually, not sure this is the right vernal pool layer. I think we didn't update this. Um we have a a vernal pool that has um variations depending on whether you're highlands, pines and and in caffra and so forth. So that will be updated um ve- very shortly. Um vernal pools, we have five points. We have the change um the change mapping where you have habitat connectivity, that is um it could be as high as fifteen points um and um it variable points depending if you are um a corridor ranked at one and two, you get more points than corridors three, four and five. Um but you get to see how that plays out with the points um here. Um so that's E eleven, that's our environmental. Um E twelve, wellhead protection. Uh we can see how that data plays out. Um that also has variable points depending on what tier you are. So tier one is five points, that's the light blue. Uh and then tier two is green and tier three is purple. Uh and you get um four and three points respectively for that. Um so we're bringing in that wellhead uh dimension of groundwater recharge. Um steep slopes, fifteen points for that. Now, no surprise, steep slopes in South Jersey. Again, I'm focusing on South Jersey. We have them by stream corridors. We have sleep slopes. But you know, I do have insecurity or envy of my North Jersey uh uh counties up here that have real steep slopes that are significant and need to be considered uh as an environmental um uh factor uh to to consider. So that's fifteen points. Um uh Rowan has an in an index. We take all the open space data that we can collect and we put it all together in a parcel map. It's not data that we've created the data layer. We just associated with the parcel deck. So no, it's not a data layer that that we have as a data layer to share. We're doing kind of magic of GIS. But what this is showing is everything that's fine land preservation is yellow. Everything that's the DEP dataset is dark green and everything else, county lands and uh land trust and 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 whatnot are this lighter green. Um and we've, so that's, we put this all together and then, you know, have it colored this way. Um but this hopefully gives a little bit more complete open space inventory um than just the DEP dataset, which is excellent. The DEP dataset is excellent, but it misses some data layers that that um that are not um uh required to be sent to the DEP. Um we have um uh we have the agricultural development areas for to bring in fine land preservation. These are the the county ADAs mapped. Uh and then we have the conservation blueprint model for Ag um to add um a little bit more emphasis on where are the remaining parcels that really are valuable for farmland preservation uh according to the conservation blueprint and just giving uh, you know, so some, a shout out of a couple of points for that to help focus for fine land preservation purposes. That's it. That's the whole environmental model. Add them all up and it looks something like, it looks exactly like this, right? Uh and and that's really pretty cool. We can see cumulative values of what we think are or what we know are really important environmental resources. Uh and so um now, again, nothing's masked out. We don't mask out the the open space in this model. So these two sub-modes are really good to look at individually. Um and we could put the open space mask on there and see where the sensitive areas that are not preserved. Maybe as a focus of where to focus conservation in the future. Um we can also put on um, you know, mask out water bodies and then see what's already urbanized. And maybe the places that are popping out as dark green are are really focus areas for conservation. Um and um but here's the, here's the thing that is, I think, is really exciting. If we um take this now and we um we 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 take the the um the 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 urban up here, right? We take the urban map. Remember that looks like? We just looked at that and we turn on the environmental. Okay, what is the difference between the two? What if you subtracted the environmental from the urban? What would that give us? Now, in some ways, I don't think this is the the I don't think you should just only look at the combined map because the combined map is, doesn't give the nuances of the difference. It just gives, it gives the differences. And there's not going to be any place in New Jersey where it's all perfect for, well, there'll be a few places that are perfect for only um conservation or only development or redevelopment. It's really going to be decision-making that happens. Um that's going to be a combination of the two. We zoom in here to New Brunswick. We can see now with this final model with the water and open space clipped out, we now have let let me turn on the sub-model so you can see. Let's take a look at the, at the urban model for for this area, right? You see how that is reflected in the combined? But in this, you don't see any of the the streams or the habitats or anything. In the combined, you see them. So that's really helpful. But then same thing with the environmental. We turn on the environmental sub-model. Right? We see all the 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 places that are really important, the flood zones along the Raritan, the um and the wildlife habitats. A lot of stream corridors are, doesn't matter whether it's already developed. It's important to be thinking about the the environmental quality, even in already developed layers. I can turn on the the urban mask and that's going to show, even especially if you have some 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 transparency here. That's going to show where even in urban areas, there's important environmental resources for, to be considered. So this is going to help planning areas one be planned in areas that still um uh are important to uh consider uh preserving. And at the same time, maybe in rural areas, it's going to show where there are um uh areas that are um still um have some focus for the redevelopment. Right? Areas that are coming through not as the greens, but as the tans and the and the yellows are areas that are not developed yet, but it could be uh appropriate areas, even in planning areas four or five for there to be compact uh centers-based development. So it helps to have this data to give the reality what's on the ground um cut to to inform the conversations that happen at that local municipal level. Okay, so um I'm 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 hoping that this is um making sense. I've had your attention. I'm now going to, yes, I'm going to uh, where's my chat here? I'm going to paste in the chat um the the URL um and uh, okay, where's my message? All right.
And while you're doing that, I see Bruce has his hand raised.
Okay.
Bruce.
Once you, once you're, once you're ready, um if you
Yeah, okay.
Uh there were a couple of things on redevelopment. One is the uh question is a question. The areas in need of redevelopment, is that as designated by the municipalities?
That's the DCA data. Uh and I think actually, as I'm, as I'm looking at the one that we have rendered here, uh we may need to have an update. I'm not sure, but that's just, that's a DCA dataset. Um and so I'm not sure how current this one is. We want to make sure we have the most current, but that's where that comes from.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I know that, yeah, DCA does have a role. Then there was ano- another map that you showed that I think you said the pink are areas that are opportunities for redevelopment. But it was very quick. And so I looked at it and said, it looked like everything that wasn't built was pink. But if you go back to that.
I think it was urbanized areas?
Yeah, so right now I have, urban is down here at the bottom, right? I have urban lands mask. This is every, everything as of twenty-twenty land use. When you turn that on, that is kind of showing everything that is urban land use. And and what that does is let's say that we're in the um well, this is the combined map. If you turn on the urban lands mask and then make the opacity just be full, so the urban is really blocking out everything else. What you're seeing now, since urban's already developed, this is showing non-developed, the little donut holes, non-developed lands that if we look at the model, the the more your orange, the more it has the factors for redevelopment or for development. The development factors are high there, the combination of all those development factors. If it is green or blue, it's saying that's the, that there's higher uh environmental um values there. So this is kind of showing um with this mask turned on, the donut holes are undeveloped land. We don't want to just develop all the undeveloped land, like the 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 urban pink areas, that should also be where we think about future redevelopment. But for thinking about development of greenfields, the greenfields that are coming out as as oranges and and dark orange are, have more factors that are suggesting redevelopment than environmental protection. And the and the player areas that are dark blue and dark greens are suggesting the environmental resources there are important. So it's open fields, it's it's forests, it's 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 wetland, it's uh farmland. But the environmental factors there are are, you know, are important. So pay attention to them. Don't just assume that that's it's an open green field, so uh green light for development. It doesn't say that you can't develop it. It's just showing the combined factors that are, that we're, that we have in this model. These are just models, are saying there's more development, pro-development factors in the oranges and the dark orange. Uh and there's more environmental factors in the blues and the greens. So
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so but but the pink is the uh areas that are developed, is that?
It's it's land use urban twenty-twenty. Yes, it is developed. All all developed land in the data, in the DEP dataset. So it could be industrial, could be housing, it could be uh a parking lot. Um it's just, it's altered land that's been developed and it's been identified that in in the development um mapping. They did land use mapping of the DEP. Um it doesn't say whether it's it's ripe or not for redevelopment. Um but anything that's developed eventually, whether it's in a year or in a hundred years, is probably going to be redeveloped. Um uh one, once the the rest of these donut holes are going to be filled in with either open space or or development. That's where we're headed. That's what we talk about when we mean build out. Um so um yeah.
Yeah, well, I I think this is amazing. So congratulations.
One o- one other thing here that is uh an ancillary project that's that's going, that that is, you know, related to all that we're talking about um is um the 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 remaining, what's remaining, right? So if we have the urban mass that you're seeing here, that's this pink. Um what's remaining uh as far as like, that's down here under reference layers. So you can see at the bottom, you can open up and unfold reference layers, bottom left. And we have, we have the highlands management areas and the pines uh there, but we, and caffra. But we also have this remaining landscapes, beta, I just threw that in there. Uh it's it's on another part of the NJ map project, but it it is, has to do with the work that we're doing with Donna. And what this map is, is showing um what's left. And I don't remember if I presented this to this group or not yet, but essentially this is, it's the same data that we just saw kind of put together in a different model where everything that's already urban is pink in this model. Everything that is um urban but has some of those constraints, a flood zone, a wetland or whatnot, is mapped as orange. So we can now say areas that are developed that are have a, some kind of a a environmental or are constrained to them. Um those are are areas that should not be redeveloped, right? These orange constrained areas are developed now, but they should be thought about as not being places to redevelop. And then preserved open spaces, green. Everything that's purple is undeveloped and unconstrained. It's 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 a farm field, a forest, everything that's a blue is not developed as of twenty-twenty, but it has some kind of constraint. It's a flood plain, it's a wetland. It's uh, it's steep slope um in in that model. This is going to be a really important map in understanding where are the possibilities for development and redevelopment um that are um that, and and you know, how much of those acres are in different parts of the world? Of world, of New Jersey. New Jersey is the world. Uh but what you can see is the the remaining undeveloped unconstrained lands, the purple blobs. Well, there's a lot down in Salem and Cumberland Counties, but statewide, there's not a whole lot of remaining undeveloped and unconstrained lands. there's not a whole lot of remaining undeveloped and unconstrained lands. We are really marching towards build out in a in a way that is not a good thing or bad thing. It's the truth. But how do we want to? Well, how do you want to think about these remaining purple lands and blue lands, which are the the lands that are not developed or not preserved? That it's really going to help to drive the conservation and the development and redevelopment narrative.
So some of those areas I think we might want to preserve.
Absolutely.
I mean, you know, even if they don't have environmental constraints, you know, those, I think in in some of the urban areas, they probably need more parks, more open space. And so yeah. But I think that's something for the municipality to evaluate.
So so this, this is, this is it. I'm gonna get back to kind of the the beginning here and I turn off my urban mask.
While you do, while you're doing that, Julia has her hand raised and then Steve.
Okay, sure. All right.
Yeah, thanks.
When I'm trying to explain to people what I've been learning, I start babbling. I'm so excited about it. I think it's absolutely amazing. I also think that we should be teaching children as as young as elementary school how to map. Because it's how people tell stories. It's amazing to me how excited people get about maps and always have done. But all of this is based on data or data. And I am that is only as good as however current it is, you know. Will will the data automatically be updated? How does that work? You know, do you know that the data you're looking at that we're using to map is accurate or, you know, is the most recent? Or when was it last updated? How how data management is going to be a monster?
I think, well, no data set is one hundred percent perfect. This gives you kind of a guidance to say, well, this is something I need to look further into. As the data sources are updated, we could easily, and I'm speaking for John, but we could easily put in the updated data layers. But it it's really a question of when those data sources get updated. Is it perfect? No. Is it ever going to be perfect? Probably not. But it will give you a sense of where where you're looking and what what you're
There should be some way of when you're looking at this to know where to go and find the metadata and to find out when it was most recently updated.
Yes, correct. As we are are fleshing out this and filling in, we don't have it at all here on on most of the NJ map themes. And again, we are, this is this is why it's beta, but there would be another link here that would say more. And you click on that and it would have more detailed information, including the source data where the metadata is. But Julia, I can't agree with you more. I hope I can like put you in my pocket and take you around and and you know, have you
I'll come babble anywhere you want, John. I think this is so exciting.
First of all, how awesome mapping is. And secondly, that the data and updating is key for this to have real meaningful impact on things. Once the data is shown to be something that's flawed, it could really undermine this whole project. And so it is a question, and you know, yeah, of course, this is self-serving. I hope that Rowan is the mapper of this. This is not, you know, this doesn't belong to Rowan per se. It's on our NJ map platform. But the idea of putting all these layers together and making a model out of it, this is really a collaboration with with Donna's office and a lot of other stakeholders that she has brought into the state planning update process. So but to to have a future, this is not going to be able to just be sitting on a server that you got to pay for the server, but then you got to update it and you you need to pay people to that are much smarter than me. Like Mackenzie who's online here, who's just a genius, but you know, we do have to figure out a way of making this sustainable, which would mean a regular updating protocol, at least, you know, twice a year or something like that, that we go and we gather the latest data, we rerun the model. And that that needs to be thought about in the future and that there is a, you know, there's going to be a cost to that.
But you gotta, you gotta know that everybody's going to be trying to jump on your bandwagon and and claim bits of this, but you and Donna can probably travel the country boasting about New Jersey and what New Jersey is doing with data and 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 mapping and and what an incredible tool you have created. So congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Steve. But you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I just had just a quick observation and obviously we could debate the point system. You know.
And that's why we're calling it a beta.
For the next twenty years, right? But the the one thing that I I noted, the we're trying to, I think one of the great exercises of this is to deciding where we want to grow, right? And that's part of what our charge is in the plan. And encouraging redevelopment, I think, you know, I've said over and over again that I think that's probably that one of the top, you know, two or three goals in the plan. And facing the reality of home rule, the idea that all of the metrics are really ninety percent state government driven and maybe ten percent FEMA. And the only one that's really municipally driven is the area in need, which is a town saying we want this site to be pro-growth, right? You can just, you can have a discussion about what growth that might be, but they want something to happen there that's either going to allow people to live there or provide jobs there or provide entertainment there. So it seems to me that because that's really the only municipal metric, we should figure out a way to create more value for it.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
I I think it's a very good point and but I would I would suggest also that the centers designation is something municipalities have skin in the game with. And if this encourages more municipalities to create centers, because in order to get more points for it, I think that's a that's a second factor that municipalities have power over is centers designation.
Or at least they have, they have input into.
They have input.
They have input.
They can't declare it a center like we can declare it an area in need, right?
Yeah. Okay.
Well, and don't forget, DCA still has to approve that area in need unless it's in a planning area one.
Fair enough.
Even to some extent, there is some state input into all of this. Before we get off of this, Elizabeth asked if we could like zoom into Atlantic City for a quick minute. Because Atlantic City is one of those areas that many state agencies are looking to encourage growth in. But it has a fair amount of environmental issues because of just its location. So Elizabeth, you want, is there a specific area you want to point to?
Sure. And I I'm, I hope I'm not taking more time for everyone. I wanted to actually wait till after the call, so I didn't take
We could do, we could do it separately, but let's take a quick look, only because it's really a good example of of the challenges of both.
Right. And we absolutely need and want redevelopment in Atlantic City. We have vacant parcels. Our only environmental issue really is the the, you know, the flooding, not to make it sound simple. But most of the area is high ground. So it matches well where you have the redevelopment, that is our highest ground in Atlantic City. And also there is a lot of opportunity for redevelopment in those areas. So everyone's worried, you know, concerned about conservation on in the green spaces. And we have the opportunity need and want redevelopment. There are so many challenges because just because of the fact that we're an urban environment. So we have you know, social issues and things like that. But I totally agree with what Stephen just said, the entire city is an area in need of rehabilitation. And we certainly have a lot of areas in need of redevelopment that are designated. So the city wants it, we need it. And it should be here. So I'm glad to see that it has red because when we looked before, it was you know, all covered in water. So that's what I wanted to see in particular. So.
Okay, well, we can look at it in detail, well, at another meeting. Steve, is your hand still raised or do you have any other questions? Okay. Any other questions or thoughts?
Are people able to follow along? Do the link work? Are people looking at it at home? Okay.
Yes, yes, I just, I just downloaded it and and bookmarked it. So.
I want to point out that if you open up boundary layers, that's where you can turn on municipal boundaries. And that's where you can also turn on parcels, which is a lot of fun. And if you click on any parcel, it'll bring up our parcel explorer option. And you can open in a parcel explorer and get information on that particular parcel. This, we are, we are really wanting feedback. The point system within, we expect this to to evolve over time and and at this stage be tweaked. Like, are these the right points for this for this version? I, you know, this is intended to be like an index, like the Dow Jones, they keep changing whatever the top companies are in the in the Dow Jones index. Maybe we don't want to go more than about twenty layers for each one, just because it's, you know, keeping it manageable. Are these the right layers? Is there other data that might replace a layer, something like that? So I want to get this to be thought about as trying to have the best data possible and that will evolve. And if you want to give input over here, there is a little comment box. And that will bring you to a place where you can give comments on the NJ map part of it. I will also show you that you can have the 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 state plan, if you if you are going to the, let's see, where is it here? If you go up to the top where the I button is, that'll open up a place where you can get to the state plan page where we we want the official state plan comments. Well, this is going to NJ mapper. That has to be fixed. That's the, that's the secret site that you're not allowed to go to. But anyway, there is play, there's, we want the feedback is essentially what I'm saying. And so please feel like this is yours to comment on. If the points aren't right for redevelopment, that's what we want to hear at this point. And so that, there you go. I hope this was giving you an idea of what this is, how it's come together here. And I hope you're as enthusiastic as we are to have this out in the real world now.